... indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have no adjustments to the agenda tonight?
No.
Approval of the December ninth to top of fourteen minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing them move to a vote, all in favor. Thank you.
Now, this is your package.
Communication and correspondence.
Yes, members of the board, we have four letters for you this evening. Three are letters of retirement of staff, long time staff members. One is a letter of resignation, and I will address those in my report.
Public participation, is there anybody from the audience who has something to speak about? Ed and G administrators and student board members report. Start, of course, with Rachel Bunker.
In student council news, the angel tree that we did in December was a success, with all the gifts being delivered back to governors to be wrapped and delivered to the children. We all had a very fun time picking out the gifts, and I think we really bonded while we were picking out gifts for the children. At the end of this month, we will be having the Second Annual Mathematics Survey, and this is an optional online survey taken by the students to find their top ten most and least compatible students in the school. The results will be mailed back to us mid-February, and the students can pay $1 to collect their paper results. And we find that this is a very fun thing to do right before Valentine's Day, and we hope there will be an even greater student participation than last year. And lastly, student council is in the very early stages of planning a highlighter dance. We haven't gotten it approved yet, which is why we're in the very early stages. And our hope is to open up the dance to surrounding high schools, including MDI, Sumner, GSA, and Bucksport. And our goal is to help develop camaraderie between local teens who may not get to see each other outside of school. And we plan on hiring a DJ and either renting or buying the black lights. And many of you are probably wondering what a highlighter dance is. So the gym is decorated with black lights, which makes neon colors glow even more. So kids decorate white t-shirts with highlighters and glow sticks and stuff, and we just dance, and it's a lot of fun. We had one my freshman year, so we're hoping to do that again.
Sounds like fun.
Was this the first time that you had schools invited?
Yeah, my freshman year, it was just open to EHS. That was put on by the senior class at that time. So student council is hoping to open it up to surrounding area high schools, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In front of you. Winter sports are underway, and I'm proud to announce that each team has represented the high school in a very positive manner this winter. And the highlight of recent note is the cheerleading team finished second last weekend in the Big East competition. I'm sure you're all aware that for the past few years, the SAT has been issued on a Saturday, and it was the, it replaced the MEA. This year, it isn't. There's a new test. But the legislature has supported still offering the SAT to all juniors at no cost. So we're going to sponsor it, it's going to be on a school day. And we've had great response from a number of facilities in town because we're going to take the junior class off-site for the testing that day. So within the next week or so, we're going to check out the sites to see which works best, because you have to have a large room because of the masses, and then you have to have smaller rooms for the special testing, if children need extra time and that sort of thing. But the response of churches and other facilities have been phenomenal within the town. In January, later this, or February, excuse me, we'll be offering the ASVAB, and that's the Armed Service Vocational Aptitude Battery Test. Now, historically, the high school has offered that to sophomores. And what it is, it's an aptitude test, and for the past few years, we haven't done it. But we're going to do it again this year. It's proctored by the military, but because we're giving it to sophomores, the military can't use the data. So families will not be inundated with recruiting requests as a result of it. And then guidance will use it to work individually with students to show them and their families what aptitude, what areas of vocational. It's a great, great tool, because quite frankly, the military has all the jobs that the public sector has, and so it's a nice, nice offering. But we won't require it. People can opt out of it if they wish. The high school has formed a proficiency-based steering committee to monitor the journey that we're on, but also to disseminate information. And they're going, every department's represented on it, and they will be meeting weekly for a semester. If you can imagine, this ends next, a week from Friday. So that means the year is half over. And we adjusted the afternoon bus schedule for the winter months at least, because the high school students were waiting at the high school for buses 20, 25 minutes at times. And with the weather that we just experienced, that wasn't very, so I'd just like to personally thank the middle and the elementary schools for cooperating, because it's adjusted them a little bit and put a little burden on them, but it really is working out well. Interesting, kids are getting home sooner than they were previous. So, thank you.
Jim. All right. Good evening, Amy Peterson-Roper, elementary principal.
And Jim Newitt, middle school principal.
We wanted to share with you this evening some news that we got from the Department of Education. Last year, we were designated as a monitor school. Not a lot was brought up around it, because it was new. So a monitor school status happened from looking at the 2012, 2011-2012 Kneecap. That's the standardized test, or the test, the state test that all third through, in our case, eighth graders take. And a monitor status was if we had either reading or math gaps between our whole school population, or Caucasian children, to a subgroup. And our gap was in our special education. And so we built a K-8 leadership team, and we wrote a plan. And it was, it's a great plan. We have a K-8 leadership team that looked at the data and sort of went through everything we're doing, and we divided it up into three sections, and we made ourselves like a five-year plan. And we didn't have really any support from curriculum at that time. Now, we're very lucky to be in a district where we have a curriculum coordinator and a school board, and we sort of passed all the professional development and the data off to where it belonged. And we continue to focus on student needs. And we have a representation on this committee from kindergarten through eighth grade, as well as an ed tech, and two special education providers, and a literacy specialist. So together, we've been working really hard throughout the spring, looking at the data, talking about what we could do differently. One of the things you saw was the co-teaching, that presentation that happened a few months ago. And we visited schools to find out what they were doing. We started to talk about proficiency-based education. We created daily target times, where we had that at the lower level, but not through the K-8 time. As you know, we have not taken another test then since the last one, but since the last one, we have a new status.
Kind of very sad to report that that status puts us in a focus school category, which means for the second year in a row, our gap continues to be very wide between the percent of students proficient in the Caucasian subgroup. And reading, that percent proficient was 73 percent, compared to our students with disability population at 27 percent. So there's a 46-point difference between what most every kid achieves in our school and what students with disabilities achieve. That's not good. The same is true in math, although we actually improved our overall math proficiency in the school from 70 to 74 percent on last, not this past fall, but the fall before, 13, 14. Even though overall we did better in math, there's still that gap between the 74 percent of the Caucasian population that is proficient and the 27 percent of our students with disability. So the state, rightly so, as would we, found upon that. It's not what we want for our special needs kids to have just a small percent of those kids making proficiency. It's obviously difficult when you are a special needs child to be proficient at eighth grade work if you're an eighth grader, when you're really maybe two or three or four years behind. But each subgroup has its target goal, and, you know, we're not, we're not making that goal. And that gap is too big. So what does a focus school mean? It means now that we not only have to have a leadership team, which we already have, they want you to have, I wouldn't say another one, but you have to have one in a new designation. We have given a state consultant with whom we will meet this Thursday. Amy, myself, Dan, Rachel, and a guy named Steve Cottrell. I have no idea who he, who he is. Dan knows him. So we'll meet with him. This designation is for a three-year period of time, and over that course of that three-year period, we have $10,000 from the state to do some work around professional development, around this planning process and implementation process. So, you know, it's not nice to report that you have a label on you as a focus school, but it is nice to report that despite our efforts, and we think we've done well with our efforts, you know, we're going to be utilizing this consultant and a software package called YeargoeStar that will hopefully zero in on the root cause of why this is happening. And then if we know the cause, hopefully we can adjust our practices to, you know, decrease that gap. So, you know, to make my holiday vacation, and I called Dan to say, you got the same email I did. And, you know, Dan has a great attitude about it, said, look at it as an opportunity. And that's how you, you know, we have to be positive about it and look at it in that fashion, so that, you know, collectively, we move in the right direction. Amy and I both shared it together with our faculties last Wednesday, so they're well aware. You know, they've seen the report I've written, and they've all seen the data charts that, you know, reflect our test scores. And so we've gone through this, and frustrated would be a good word for it, because people work pretty hard around here, and you don't want to have, you know, feel like you're underserving a population of your kids. That's the reality. We'll march on.
So the gap, that sort of seems kind of a strange way to assess, like, where you're falling behind, because if your kids were 50 percent, you know, and then your gap is smaller. So I'm wondering, for me, I would be more interested in knowing what those goals are for the special needs kids and their percentage. Where should we be reaching for, and what's sort of the norm in the, what's the norm in the state?
So, so the reason why this is happening, the whole monitor status and that sort of thing, is that the state and me wrote a waiver to the NCLB. So it was in 2017, 18, that 100 percent of children would meet or exceed the standard, which we know that was a pie in the sky, but it was good to keep us on our track about thinking all kids. And so this waiver, what this does say is that you need to keep all of your subgroups, economically disadvantaged, all of them, moving forward. And most, as far as the state was concerned, the state did grow. They were able to grow, not a lot, and we're higher in the state in many areas. But we did not, we did not grow. We, in fact, slid backwards.
Just in reading.
Just in reading. In math, we targeted math really hard. For the last three years, we've been targeting math, and our scores have gone up. For some reason, our reading scores have not gone up. And, you know, now that we have curriculum coordinator, and we have a new focus, I think we will begin to look at what that is. So the gap is, you know, they want to see, every subgroup has a goal. So the population for students with disabilities, we were at a 34, and our goal was to hit 40. We went from a 34 to a 27.
Right, okay.
But backwards. Now, the reason why we were a monitor school two years ago was because we didn't make the goal, but we were progressing to its goal. So we got an issue, and I think we have given the time to sort of peel through what that might look like. And, you know, you have great teachers, and I think, you know, we will figure it out together.
Are there changes in population due that we're seeing? Like, you reported to us at the earlier that we had more kids coming in with challenges.
That was my question, too.
Those are, so they, so right now, students that are coming in with disabilities, they didn't take these tests. And when you are at a particular level, you don't take the kneecap. You take an alternative assessment called the PEP.
Is it for the valid kneecap?
However, can I just add to that?
Sure. Come up to the microphone.
Well, come on. Just to add to that a little bit, you can only utilize an alternate assessment for 1 percent of your population. And so the students that are allowed to take the alternate assessment are students with significant cognitive disabilities, such as an intellectual disability. So even your students that have pretty significant learning disabilities have to do the kneecap, or the S-back, or the MEA. And so, you know, it's unfortunate, because, you know, it's frustrating for the students to have to go through that, but that's, that's how it is. And not just for our district, for all districts. But it is a very small number of students who can, that have the opportunity for an alternate assessment. And so, and another thing, just to add to the discussion that we're focusing on in special education, and we have been for the last couple of years, is to really expose our students to higher-level thinking by utilizing curriculum that the students in the regular education setting use. However, it might be a different grade level, but it's the same curriculum, whether that's Springboard or everyday math. And I shouldn't say curriculum, I should say really teaching resources. Lucy Cockins, those teaching resources. Because, you know, prior to that, I think an issue that we had was that our, our students in special education weren't necessarily exposed to that higher-level thinking and the same kind of rigor. So we expose them to those higher-level thinking skills now through more application versus calculation and isolation, for example, in math. So we're working more on that. The other thing that we've been doing, and this we've been doing for quite some time, is we, when I first came to Ellsworth, the special education teachers really had professional development that was sort of separate from regular education. And we're not doing that either. We are making sure they are involved in all of the professional development opportunities that are afforded to the regular education teachers, whether it's Daily Five, or Lucy Cockins, or Springboard, whatever it is. They're taking advantage of that as well. So those are some of the things we have been, have been working on.
The other side of that, too, is remember, this was a, the tests are taken in October, and so you have your teaching year a whole summer, and then you come back to school. And this, you know, the 2013, 13, 14 was in the October, and we really had just started implementing same curriculum. So we can't see the benefit yet of any of, a lot of it, some of it we can, but. And the other wonderful news is, we have a lot, we are growing. It's just we have to figure out this one subpopulation, and I know we will.
If I could just spell on her question real quickly, and I think you touched on it, but I want, I guess my, I'm assuming, I think I know the answer, but with this subgroup that we're talking about, do these tests measure, I guess, apples to apples? I'm assuming that there is some transition in that group from year to year that it's not the same students over and over again, like, from one year, and maybe, you know, a certain set of students the next year that may have changed some. Do people turn and turn?
Your grade always goes out, and your third grade always, you know, your second to third graders always come in, so.
But your subgroup in terms of the special ed population changes slightly depending on if students are dismissed from special education. So your subgroup are always going to be students who are currently eligible for special education services. And those students that are found eligible have to be demonstrating significant weaknesses in achievement, below grade level achievement. And so even if you have kids that are dismissed from special education because they're able to access the general curriculum, that subgroup, the names, some of the names may change, but the students that are in there are always in there because they are below grade level. I don't know if that gets to what you're, you were asking.
Well, I guess my question was, could the numbers have changed because the specific students you're testing have changed? So it may not be a fault in our program, but it could be a fault, not a fault, but a differentiation in exactly who's taking the test. It may not be our curriculum that hasn't progressed, and it may be that there are different students taking that exam compared to the year before, which is what they're using to analyze our progress.
Absolutely, and I think you hit upon it around the differentiation part. I think we just need to figure out, how can we get better at helping all students access whatever's being taught?
If I could also add, it's also important to remember that when these assessments are administered, we're taking a snapshot of the school year over a two, three-week period, and that's what these test results reflect. So I think we need to be careful about focusing on which subgroup we're talking about. It could be any of our subgroups that are part of that analysis gap. It just happens to be a difference with one specific subgroup on this particular year and last particular year, but it's based on a snapshot. I would still focus more on what Jim said earlier. This is an opportunity for us to go back and take a look at what our practices are, how we're doing. Set aside all the dynamics of standardized assessment, because there are a lot of dynamics that go into how students perform. And let's bear that in mind as well. It's a good opportunity to take a look at what we're doing. And as you all know, since we started up as a district again in July, we're taking a look at everything we're doing. This is just another piece of that mix.
Wonderful.
I have one more question here. Because this is something I care a lot about, I was thinking, too, about having a pre-K program. Are we able to sort of see any changes in having more kids that are coming out of preschool programs, and changes in assessment values and like?
So this will be our fourth year having a pre-K program. So those, that, that group of students are our first year of third graders. So this will be the first time that they take. But what we can, what I can tell you is our collaboration with Child and Family Opportunities, they do follow the early childhood guidelines, and they are working hard. They have their own set of standards in pre-K now to have children reach.
Yes. And we have a very, a very thorough process in place in terms of transitioning from either a pre-kindergarten program or some sort of a preschool program to kindergarten. We have meetings on those students in the spring for every student that receives special education services through Child Development Services. We hold a meeting together with the providers from the preschool as well as the providers from the elementary school. We meet together, we look at the plan, we make adjustments to the plan. We go and do some observations sometimes, depending on the level of need of the student. So that's a pretty smooth process as well.
But we only service 20 children.
I know.
Compared to, in, our population in kindergarten this year is 107.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On a happier note, we had a great winter concert right before vacation. Both the band and the chorus sounded wonderful, and Ms. Cowan had done a nice art, you know, self-guided tour around the building to see all the art displays that she put up for that event. So, you know, really positive stuff coming out of the arts. Co-curricular news, many of the activities that you folks approved last, whenever we approved them, when we first came into existence, I guess, are now being put in place. And the Winter Running Club has 30 students that started running last week. They ran again today. Art Club for Grade Five starts next Thursday. Robotics Club for Grades Five, Eight starts on January 26th. And Ms. Cowan, as I mentioned, she directs the art club, and Ms. Madala and Ms. Mitchell, our GT teacher, directs the robotics club. Basketball has just about a couple of weeks left in the season. We're winding down there and kind of toward the end of their season, and the cheerleaders start doing their competitions. So, you know, we certainly wish the cheerleaders well, and our basketball teams have won their fair share, and they've also lost a few. But kind of as Mr. Lindberg had stated about the high school, I'm very pleased with how the middle school conducts themselves, win or lose. Parenting community news, I just actually came from an eighth-grade parent night. This is a group that's helped organize fundraisers for end-of-year eighth-grade events. And right now, you could purchase some Morton's Moo tickets that the eighth grade is selling, and a portion of the proceeds for each pint, quart, or ice cream cake that you purchase goes back to the eighth grade. So it's a nice, nice thing that the parents are doing. And one of their components is to involve the kids in this process, and the kids selling these ice cream products is getting their involvement in earning money towards their events. We had a very nice talent show right before our holiday break. Matt Reed sang a great "Don't Stop Believin'" from, is it "Don't Stop Believin'?" It's a Jersey song? "Don't Stop Believin'," yeah, it was great, great version, sorry, should have been right here. Caitlin McCullough sang and played the guitar, and Aurora Haslam also sang. And that's something the student reps and I organize, and it's a nice thing to pull off right before break. I'll get out while they get, it's good, thank you.
And more good news from EEMS. We've been working hard to be, bringing children together as a K-8 population. And on Monday before the holiday break, we had a K-7 holiday cheer activity where kids worked together on craft, and they were able to do another activity, and then they were able to come and pick out a gift for someone special in their lives. And we had people who came and helped wrap. And then in the afternoon, we had a K-7 sing-along. And it was, it was enjoyable, lots of people loved it. We did have our perfect attendance. Last time I told you, it was 104, it was actually 107 students for the whole trimester. No tardies, no absence, and no dismissals. We continue to have between 200 and 250 children every month getting a, some sort of pencil or sticker or something for coming to school every day on that month. We did a vacation reading challenge, and I reported that at Thanksgiving break, we had about 50 percent for the, for the six days where we were out, or seven days. And this time, we were out much longer. We had about 43 percent of our student population read nine or more days. And we're not discouraged by that, because we know that more reading is happening. And so our literacy team, Tina Young and Ruth Van Etystein, Kelly Rudolph, and Aurora Stickle are really working hard on that. And kindergarten registration is right around the corner. We will be having it at the beginning of March. We're pretty excited about that. And we also have a winter walk to school that's going to be happening on Wednesday, February 4th. It's going to be an exciting way for us to keep our walk-to-school adventures going. And Dave Norwood is, is helping getting that organized. For PTF news, we had a wonderful Polar Express evening where everybody came in their jammies, and lots of people donated food and chocolate and popcorn, and it was really fun. We have the next movie night on February 6th. That's a change from the newsletter. And our next PTF meeting is on January 20th. And following that will be our last organized volunteer training with Tim McCleskey. That doesn't mean you can't call to get a training, but this is a great opportunity to come with others. Any questions?
Did you ever count the sign-in for that, for the movie?
Did you ever count the sign-in for that, for the movie?
You know, that will happen on January 20th. We didn't have a December, we didn't have a PTF meeting following that, and, but what I can tell you is that donations were a little over $300, so I, it was, there were quite a few people there. I would say maybe 150?
At least.
At least 200?
Yeah, cafeteria, there was a.
It's a lot of fun.
I had trouble finding places to sit.
Yeah, it's a.
It was awesome.
I always roll in a chair. It's a lot of fun though. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. She sent that. Well, I didn't write a copy either, but I saw. I read it.
I have a copy of it.
Should I mail it to her?
Yeah.
All right.
Hi, I'm Annie Sargent, the Adelpa Director, very happily so. And when I was preparing a report for tonight, I kind of felt like I should just bring this, our course catalog, and, because it really does represent our whole program. But I did prepare a little bit of a report here. Excited to say that the catalogs were in the mail exactly when we wanted them to be there, which was the first week in January, and immediately the phone was ringing off the hook, and I get notifications of the registrations on my email, so ping, 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 ping. So the catalog is set, obviously, because it's printed, but one of the things that we did was we had Help Wanted in the Help Wanted section, and as a result of that, five or six people who wanted to teach not one but several classes have called us. So we have several additional classes, including Mac computer classes and other web design and some additional computer classes. Somebody who wants to, who's a retired art teacher who wants to teach several classes, so we're excited about that, as well as somebody who has a lot of experience with sewing, who is interested in teaching a lot of classes. Those are classes that were requested, so that's why I'm mentioning it tonight, that if you're interested in knowing more about the classes that we're having, if you're somebody that likes to go online, that we have an online catalog, and that will be updated. We also, on the website, is a copy of an updated catalog, so the information, sometimes we have to update the information because of changes, and the catalog on there is up to date. We have new high school completion sessions starting the week of the 26th, and the reason that we do that is that we have it after the term ends at Ellsworth High School, in case anybody needs credit recovery or isn't able to complete at Ellsworth High School so that they can join us. If you're thinking of that, we have a very individualized program, so we really, it's much easier for the student if they come ahead of the class, or you, it's not so easy to just show up on the 26th. It's good to give us a call and set up a meeting so that we can design a program to meet your needs. We've had great participation in our programs, and really, this is our first full semester, so we're looking forward to see the response in all of our program areas. I already know that we're going to need volunteer tutors to supplement instruction. I have several people who either read at a fairly low reading level or need support in English as a second language. We also have a lot of people who are working in our digital literacy program that need some mentorship and support. So if people are interested, we're having a volunteer orientation on the 30th of January at 9:00 in the morning, a Friday, and if you're not available during the workday, you can always give us a call and we can meet with you. Other things coming up, we have a volunteer opportunities around Hancock County. We've had a great response from that. Several people have signed up, several organizations have contacted us, and as you can see, Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County, The Black House, Everybody Eats, the Ellsworth Historical Society, a Sedgwick Community Resource Center and Clothing Closet, a food pantry in Sedgwick as well, Bagaduce Music Lending Library are just some of the many organizations that will be represented. So if you're thinking about how you can make a difference this winter, it's a good way to connect up with organizations. And we had an open house tonight. It was quite successful. We had representation from the school board, from the city. We had several instructors come by, and several people registered for classes, and we got a couple of academic students, so it was well worth the opportunity to do that. I have a couple of flyers here. One is for an international potluck, which is a family event at no cost. And I was talking to somebody at the open house tonight, it's February, Monday, February 2nd, at 5:00 at the Technical Center on Boggy Brook Road, and one of the people at the potluck said, "I just cook comfort food. I don't cook international food." And I said, "If you grew up around here, then we want to have the food from your culture." So I'm encouraging people to attend that and bring the food from their own heritage. So if comfort food for you is international food for someone else. So I encourage, I hope it'll be a fun community event celebrating the diversity in the town of Ellsworth. It's also a kickoff for a Cooking Around the World series, and there's been some confusion about that class. It's a series of one-night sessions, and the cost is $49 per session, and the reason for that is that you come for an evening, spend an evening with somebody who is from the country, so there's somebody from Spain who's giving a workshop, and you'll prepare a meal with her and informally talk about the culture and have a celebration. So you need to kind of think of it as a combination of a learning opportunity and a night out. But we did it in Sullivan, and it was very well received and really fun way to get to know people in the community, and since there isn't a lot of variety in terms of the food that you eat around here, it's a fun way to eat diverse food. So the other works, and so that's a work in progress, so check the website or give us a call if you want to be on the mailing list to know those classes.
And if that's something where you don't sign up for the whole series?
You just sign up for the classes that you want. So far, we have Indian cooking, Irish, Spanish, Peruvian, gonna miss some, but we have quite a variety.
No Armenian?
If you want to prepare the meal, we'd love to have it.
It's completely voluntary.
I love Armenian food, so that would be awesome. The other course that's similar, one-nighters, is a wellness series. So many, there's so many different complementary medicine opportunities in the Ellsworth area, and so many people don't know a lot about it. So the idea of this is that we have a panel representing different disciplines so that you can come and learn about it. It's the kind of thing where if your family members have said, "Oh, you should see a chiropractor," but you don't know what that is all about, you can come and learn about it without investing in it as a wellness program. So anyway, so those are, the bottom line is that we have a lot of variety. It's a great start. We've gotten lots of great response for different ideas, additional classes, so we're real thrilled about that. But keep in touch with us, give us ideas, and if you want more information, just be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Rachel. Second Rachel for the night.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Cornen-Ramos, I'm the Curriculum Coordinator for the Elders School Department. I actually have some exciting news to start with, that even though I've seen Paul recently this evening, I don't think he knows. Dan just handed me the signed agreement for the walking school bus grant, so we're ready to get started. So we're very excited about that. St. Higgins was able to follow up on the insurance pieces, make sure all of our ducks are in a row, and we're able to get started hopefully this month with a community forum on how that will roll out in the community. So it's very exciting, because I've actually forwarded it to them this evening, so I have it in hand, at least virtually, so they do know that we're ready to go. So it's exciting, and I suspect they will be contacting each of us about how we will move forward. But we, the community can certainly watch out for a community forum and discussion about how people can participate and support that program in the community. So it's exciting. I wanted to follow up on our Go Mad for Literacy mentoring program, where our early childhood HCTC students are mentoring students in the fourth grade at EEMS. They've been doing a really wonderful job, and what we've decided to do is the, each of the students, either in a pair or by themselves, are creating a lesson plan for each of the times that they're meeting with the students. So they're going every Wednesday at noon, and Mrs. Pangren and myself, we're, as we're discussing it, we realized that we should stop planning and let the kids do it. So the student mentors are doing full lesson plans for the session, and they're running one of the sessions for all of the other students and mentors. So that's been going really, really well. They're starting again tomorrow. They're creating books along the lines of a summer program that we created last summer, and they're working on journals, they're writing to each other, they're reading together, they're doing projects around reading and literacy, and it's just been very successful. The kids have bonded, they've gotten to know each other, they have kind of a big brother, big sister model, and it's a lot of fun to watch. They've come, it's really neat to see the kids warm up to each other and kind of, and get to feel that they have a friend that's coming visiting every day, every Wednesday. So that's been a lot of fun to watch as it evolved. We're pleased at how that's been developing. Let's see, I was able to go to, I think I counted, work with 19 different classes during the holidays. I brought a Hanukkah program, read a book with the kids, and had all sorts of different menorahs and dreidels, and talked about Hanukkah as part of the holidays. And so I was able to really get into the classrooms and see the teachers and the students, and just see the really, just impressive work ethic of the teachers in EEMS, and the camaraderie among the students, and the enthusiasm, and it was just a lot of fun for me to really be able to get into the classrooms and offer something, but really get so much. So it was a lot of fun for me to be with the kids and meeting the teachers and seeing, being in their environment. So I'm really pleased to have done that, and I just have to think of the next project to get me back over there. Our Smarter Balanced MEA testing update, that testing will be rolled out coming up in the spring, and it's a question mark, because it's going to be replacing the kneecaps, and there's a lot of questions throughout the country about how this new national test, which is aligned with the Common Core state standards, will look, and how it's going to, you know, support the students' learning, and it'll help us inform instruction. We attended one update through the Main Principles Association to kind of get up to speed technologically, and it looks like we're in real good shape. We have an excellent, strong technology infrastructure to support that. So that was a big relief, I know, to me, to hear that all the requirements we've really essentially met. And so, you know, hats off to our technology department for putting so much of that in place and being ready to go. And to support that as well, we are, we've purchased a, two different keyboarding softwares for the elementary and middle school to just help them become more facile with using the keyboard, because the Smarter Balanced test will be on the computer. So, and it has some kind of manipulation pieces where they have to move numbers into boxes and that kind of thing. So we're going to be supporting our curriculum. It's something that, even when I first came here, many parents had talked about hoping that we'd have in the schools, and so we'll be rolling that out shortly so that the kids can get a little bit of practice before the test, but more importantly, just have that in their toolbox of things that they will become stronger at. So I think that will really support the kids on that one. Tomorrow, I'm going to a state training for the Smarter Balanced Assessment to hear all the updates. It's one of those things that because it's new, it's updating every day. Every time you go to a workshop, they say, "Check our website," every day. So they're just constantly getting new information, they're updating, they're editing, they're, you know, working on their protocols. So we are staying on top of it, and I think that certainly the elementary, middle school, and the high school have been finding ways to build that higher-order thinking into their teaching. We've used some iReady materials. Mrs. Robler and Mr. Newitt have found materials through iReady that they've dispersed to the students that are items that are very similar to the type of wording that'll be used in the Smarter Balanced Assessment, and the teachers are kind of looking at those and using them in a morning meeting, maybe one item a day, or, you know, trying to kind of, in a stress-free environment, work it into the kids' understanding of the kind of language that will be used in it. So we really feel that we're positioning the students to be as prepared as they can be with something that is a new assessment. So we're kind of coming at that on all sides, and I think that one of the biggest pieces, I would say, to the community and to all of you, is that we want to talk to the families about the fact that these tests are going to be adaptive tests. And fortunately, the assessment that we're using right now for screening is also an adaptive test, the new iReady test that we've chosen to replace the NWEAs. And what that means is that as the students work, the test knows what grade you said the child is in, and they start at certain grade items, but as the students work, if they're doing well, they give them harder questions, and if they are having a difficult time, they change the challenge of each of the questions. And so it gets them to a place where they're at a comfort level, but also being challenged, but not being frustrated. And so the Smarter Balance is going to be that type of test as well. And so one of the things that's happening is that unlike when we were all kids, we had a test that had 10 items, and there was a right or a wrong answer, and you either got them right or you got them wrong. What's happening with these tests is that they are, sometimes up to 50% of the questions are meant to be harder than the students would expect, or had, or with content that they have not been exposed to, to push them to upper levels, but also with the full expectation that they would get some incorrect. And it's difficult for students who, for instance, those who have always gotten them all right, to see things that they know they've never seen before. And so one of the things I'm hoping that we can talk to our parents about, and that we'll probably try to craft a message in our website, is to start talking to our children. And as teachers, we had this conversation in the last two days as we were training more for iReady, talking to the students about the fact that they can be prepared for that to happen, and that it's not a fault on their part, it is in fact, they're being rewarded for doing so well, by getting problems that are so hard, which is really counterintuitive to students, but it is in fact what's happening. So the better they do, the harder questions they get, which doesn't really feel like a reward, but in fact, it is showing that the kids are rising to a higher and higher level. So it's a new way to look at assessments, and hopefully it'll have to change a little bit of our mindset about what we expect, just so that children are not frustrated or anxious about it, because it is in fact a better way to find out where kids really are. And so it'll be a transition, and I think that as far as communicating that to the community and people that you all know, and sharing that with parents that you know will go a long way to do that, and make students feel like they're in a safe environment where that is meant to happen, and it's not because they missed something. In many cases, there are things that they have not really been exposed to yet. So I think it'll be an interesting transition, and certainly something, over the last two days, I've met with all of the grade levels, with the support of the literacy team and the principals. I want to thank Kelly Rudolph and Ruth Van Edestein, who supported me for the last nine visits we had over the last two days, to help teachers make sure that they had all of their questions answered about this new assessment. And so we were able to meet with teachers in small groups and really discuss what that looked like in their classroom and their comfort level, and they are, as always, you know, going after it with all their heart and soul, and been seeing them in the hallways till 6, 7 o'clock the other night, copying things, finding new items, finding ways to incorporate this learning into their classroom. So I've been very impressed with the teachers and their dedication to bringing on this new kind of learning. The elementary science partnership training has started. That is a corollary to the physical science partnership through the University of Maine, and that's for the elementary group, and we're going to have teacher, teachers who have attended the cohort meetings through the University of Maine and the Elementary School Partnership, train the other teachers in the elementary school and kindergarten through five, and they'll be doing that training every other Friday for most of the rest of the year, so that next year, we are going to be receiving an exceptional amount of free materials and excellent curricular resources to have essentially a new science program in the elementary school. they have and really be able to do some wonderful things in the classroom. The iReady training, as I said, is just about complete. The teachers have had opportunities to talk about what they were missing, what they needed more training on. We have one more webinar on Friday with an assessment director at iReady. Some of our teachers have such complicated questions because they're so bright that the, they had to like bring in the big guns from, you know, from the iReady folks to make sure that they could really answer the questions that were being asked. So again, I've been so impressed with the teachers and how thoughtful they've been about how these assessments reflect their kids' work. And they're very concerned that they're accurate and that they're meaningful to inform instruction. So we have been continuing to get resources from iReady to answer their questions. And finally, we are working on the collecting data with Bill Zellwitz from the Scutick Institute, looking at iReady, looking at reports from past years, looking at Fanta's and Penel reading scores and looking at all the measures that we can collect in the schools to understand what the resource and programmatic needs are in the school. As Mr. Higgins said, we're looking at everything. And so we're really looking at numbers. We're having someone kind of from the outside look at the numbers and run different ways of looking at them side by side so we can understand, and also as the principal spoke about, what we need to do to support the school and to support all the subgroups and all the population, if that comes in reading resources or math resources or professional development. So we're doing a real active look at all of those strands and how they've played out over time and what we can do in the coming year and the coming budget season to support the school in that way. And I think that is, oh, do you have a question? Any questions?
Oh, wow, that was a lot.
Wow, Rachel, thank you. Sorry. No, it was great.
Exciting, we're glad to hear.
Very exciting.
I promise my report will be equally as exciting. First thing, a nice segue from what Rachel just finished with, the budget process is well underway. Our building principals, directors and department heads are all working with their respective staffs to craft the building level budgets. When we find time in the central office, when we're not negotiating, we're working on the system-wide budgets. We've met at least one time with our leadership team to talk staffing. We're meeting tomorrow morning about 9:00 to do more of the same. And we'll be scheduling meetings with our budget committee at the board level sooner rather than later. So we'll be looking for some emails coming from Teresa to see if we can set up some dates. On Monday this week, Hancock County superintendents had the opportunity to meet with our local legislators up at HCTC. We were treated to a nice breakfast spread, which made the conversation even better. And we're very fortunate this year that on the education committee, we have two local legislators serving. One is Brian Hubbell from Mount Desert Island, who I had the opportunity to serve with on the state funding commission study. He is outstanding. And also Senator Langley from right here in Ellsworth is on the committee. He actually is one of the committee chairs. They shared with us that there are 149 bills that the education committee will be considering in this session and they'll be starting work very soon. And they're looking forward to having regular communication with their local superintendents and also with local board members. So we'll include that in our conversations moving forward. We have hired four new staff members since our last meeting. We have hired a couple of custodians. Adam Gaddis is at EEMS. Mike Tinker is at HCTC. Joy Foster is working one day a week as a clinical supervisor at HCTC. And for those of you out in the public, we're still looking for someone else to fill two more days a week for that particular position. It will be on serving schools and in the Ellsworth American next week, so if you're interested, please let us know. And we've hired Dan Curtis to serve as varsity baseball coach at Ellsworth High School. We're expecting a couple more long-term leaves for some staff members and we'll be advertising one of those vacancies, which will be an art teacher at Ellsworth High School. So again, for the folks in the public, if you're certified in the area of arts and interested in doing a long-term sub-stent, please let us know. Rachel mentioned it, but Paul, as she talked about, was the walking school bus program. At last month's meeting, you were able to report that we were awarded the grant. The one piece we found in the memorandum of understanding was a requirement that our district's liability insurance had to cover that. As Rachel mentioned, we did find out the answer to that today, so I did sign it and I'm pleased to hear, Rachel, that you've already sent it in. So we can move forward with that particular process.
And Dave Norwood will be very happy to hear this.
I think he'll be very ecstatic. Ellsworth High School principal search process. We will commence that process this month. I am planning to bring together the same screening team that we used over the late months of the summer and that team worked very well together. The process will be for that group to get together, to renew conversation on qualities and characteristics that we desire in the next principal, revising the screening tool that we use to screen application packets to be current with the revised expectations, set up and review a timeline for advertising, screening, interviews and selection of the desired candidate. And our goal is to bring the desired candidate forward to the board at the April 10th, excuse me, April 14th board meeting. So it's an ambitious schedule, but this is the time of year that we need to do this and we're really looking forward to it. Mr. Lindbergh, any chance you'd like to stay another year?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I thought he was nice.
His warmer climate that he wants to get to right now.
We'd like to announce also that I've accepted four letters. One, a letter of resignation from Andrea Wortman, and then take three in the Fresh Start program, but also three letters of retirement. I've accepted those on behalf of the board. Teachers retiring the ship, Pat Bruce, special education teacher at EEMS. She's spent the last 25 years in the Ellsworth school system. Sandy Finley, special education at Ellsworth High School, over 30 years experience, last 15 years in the Ellsworth system. And one of those teachers is here tonight, Sue Piturney, kindergarten teacher at EEMS. If I've done my counting right, Sue, the last 25 years in the Ellsworth schools. Appreciate the years of outstanding service and dedication to the children of our community and would like to wish each of the young ladies who are retiring a wonderful finish to their final school year and the very best for the future. Thank you very much. And unless you have any questions, that concludes my report.
I loved your letter.
In your many years of working in education, have you ever received a letter of resignation written in verse?
Actually, when Sue delivered that letter the other day, I mentioned to her that, no, I had never received a letter of resignation in verse and that was the most creative one I'd ever seen.
Absolutely.
Very well done.
Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee report.
Make it good.
Great. What's this? Then? New business. Second read of the grants policy, DJD. You guys want to?
I don't think there's anything to add here. This is, this is the second read, so I'm pleased to present it to the board for final approval.
Recommend the motion to approve the second reading and accept Grants Policy, DJD, as recommended by the policy committee.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing them move to a vote, all in favor? Thank you. Second read of the Employee Computer Internet Use Policy, GBEE.
And this is another pretty straightforward policy then. We're presenting for the final read.
I recommend a motion to approve the second reading and accept the Employee Computer Internet Use Policy, GBEE, as recommended by the policy committee.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
If I may add, there's another document that was in your packet, which were the Employee Computer Internet Use Rules, which is GBEE-R. That's a document that the policy directs the superintendent to prepare. We included it in the packet for your review, but also the policy committee did have an opportunity to weigh in on that, even though they're not formally required to approve it. In the event that you have any questions.
Then we have the first read of grades 5 to 8 co-curricular activities policy, JJIB.
Yes, so the next two items on the agenda, both dealing with co-curricular activities, are policies that have required a lot of deliberation and will continue to work on. What we are doing is presenting to the board a policy that's pretty similar to what's been used in the past. We have some minor modifications that we're making, but it's, it's, it's got, we've had good input, there'll be some minor changes probably in the next read, but pretty much is ready for you to, you know, give us your feedback. So the first one is just dealing with the middle school policy.
I make motion that we accept the first read of the 5 through 8 co-curricular activity policy, JJIB, as recommended by the policy committee. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. She covered the next one too, so if we can have a motion about the high school co-curricular programs policy?
Yeah, just to identify that you'll see when we're reviewing this that we're trying to make both policies really uniform so they seem very similar. I think that's been one thing that we kind of have had an eye out when we look through these, so I think that's one improvement we've made.
I move that we accept the first reading of the high school co-curricular programs policy, JJIA, as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Should we do the calendar announcements first?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Great. So we'll speak to Oiden Kay, calendar announcements, our meeting schedule. The policy committee meeting is Monday, January 26th at the Ellsworth School Department offices at 8:30 in the morning. We have a board workshop to discuss our vision and mission development on January 27th at the central offices at 6:30. And a school board meeting on Tuesday, February 10th at City Hall Council chambers right here, same time, same place, 6:30. Right. So we need a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we enter executive session under 1MRS-A20A-SQ56E for the purpose of negotiation update to as recommended by the superintendent.
I second that.
All in favor? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you.
Seven good five.